Let's get this a little bit back over this way. Yeah, there we go. That looks a little bit better. Uh, okay. It's cutting off my head a little bit. I don't really know what to do about that. Whatever, it's fine. This looks great. You look great today, Skylar. Uh, just jumped out the shower. Today is, uh, today is day twenty-one. Very excited. Normally we'd be playing piano to let people in. So we wanna make sure there's, everyone's here for the chat. Okay. Um, I think we're ready to go. Yeah, we got people, great. Um, bonjour tout le monde, bonjour everyone. Uh, bienvenue le programme. Um, bienvenue, uh... Yes, I'm, I am live. No, I can't see you. Uh... Oh, man, what a mess today. Uh, aujourd'hui, uh, dimanche, uh, dix-huit, dix-huit, dix-huit juillet, juillet, dix-huit juillet du mi-vent. One day I'll be able to say the date. Un jour, je vais parle, je vais dit, uh, je vais dire la date. Is that how you say that? Alright, we're improv-ing, that's no good. Um, bienvenue mon programme. Skylar learns French. We're on day twenty-one of our thirty-day challenge. Literally three weeks in, over all of the milestones. Now it's just, we're on the other side. Just gotta keep riding this wave. And, uh, we will, we'll be, we'll, we'll do it. Consider it a win. Um, hope you've enjoyed this experience. I certainly have. Uh, we did a livestream last night at eight o'clock. And now it's nine-thirty in the morning, and I'm here. Uh, okay, so I'm gonna do something a little bit different today in my studies. Um, I wanted to, I've never done this. I wanted to try Babbel. Uh, I wanted to see if like a language learning program would translate well to livestreaming. So we're gonna try to do that, and if it's, if it's terrible, um, we can jump over to something else. I think, I think maybe we jump over to the Chicken Little, um, French experiment. Maybe we get a new children's book today. Or maybe we'll do both, who knows? Okay, so, checking in, I spent, I spent an hour listening to French this morning. Uh, j'ai écouté le français peu à peu. Um, and, uh, while I walked my dog, um, I don't know how to say while I walked my dog. Uh, ça marche, ça marche, marche bien? Something like that. Uh, and, that was fun. I also started watching, uh, started watching, what is this show called? Oh yeah, Nailed It? Have you seen this show, Nailed It? It is ridiculous. Uh, but I started watching it in French. And there's a French version of it on Netflix. So I'm watching that for fun. So, those are my two French activities I've already done today. Now we're gonna try to do some work. And we'll see, I think this is gonna be a disaster, to be honest. I'm really scared to do this in front of you guys. Uh, but let's, you know, that's the nature of what we're doing. So let's jump into it, no more, uh, no more stalling. Okay. So, the plan is, let me get this a little bit smaller so I can see what's going on if something's happening. Okay. Um, alright, yep, 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 great. Looks good. Okay, so the plan is to go through this, let me just back up for a second and show you where I'm at. Uh, no more Mr. Nice Guy. Oh my god, hey Sam, good morning. Bonjour, bon, uh, uh, bon journée. I guess that's a sign-off though, I can't say that yet. Okay. Uh, bon matin. Is that good? Okay, uh, so, I don't really know what's happening. I signed in, maybe I did this already? Eighteen lessons completed, so I was doing this before. Fifty-three percent level complete. No idea, there's this newcomer course, and then this newcomer course two, nine of thirteen. So it looks like I did nine lessons here, and then I'm doing half here. And I'm picking up in lesson thirteen. I don't know, I guess I did this before, let's just jump in and see what happens. Um, volume's up. Ah, hear it loud, okay, got it, let's do it. Oh lord, alright, okay, here we go, l'informaticien, la, l'informaticien, l'informaticien. Can I get that word again, please? Encore lentement, s'il vous plaît. Le professeur, le prof. L'étudiant. La stagiaire. Okay, alright, cool, feeling good. Aw, man, I hate these things. Uh, they are working together at a TV station. It's kinda what we're doing now. Uh, okay, ils, they, are, um, is, uh, travaillant, or are working. Travaille, à, oh, tells me no. Together, it wants me to put together, I was gonna say, ils travaillent, travaillent à la télé ensemble, but I guess that's wrong. Uh, ensemble, à la télé. Great, this is great. Uh, we, we're colleagues at, whatever that is. What is pluri, is that a business? What is that? Uh, on, on est collègue chez Peugeot. Peugeot. On est collègue chez Peugeot. What do you think, what do you do for a li- living? Qu'est-ce que tu fais dans la vie? Qu'est-ce que tu fais dans la vie? There's an echo? Uh-oh. Oh, hmm, interesting. I, oh, when I push play, when you hear the, the thing come from the, the computer, hmm. Let's see if this helps. I'm gonna try something. I'm doing an internship. A sick delay on the computer audio, not the mic, great. Okay, uh, I don't know what's going on with that. Oh, I just turned the computer on. Aw, man. It's early in the morning, hold on. Yep, yep, I know what's up. Here we go. This should fix it. Okay, I'm doing an, I'm doing an exciting internship. Je fais un stage passionnant. How is that? Better? Je fais un stage passionnant. Okay. On travail six heures par jour. On travail, on travail. Oh, I gotta, wait, I gotta spell this? What is it asking me? Oh, I, I have a keyboard. I thought I was trying to, I thought I was trying to do things, uh, with all this. I was like, this is some advanced French right, right here. Okay, on tra- ah, this is, this is my nightmare, doing this for you guys right now. Oh, how do you spell travail? Trav- trav- travail. This is so terrifying. Okay, we're just, nope. On tra- okay, t- 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 r- a, v- v- a. I- l- l- e. Trav- va- okay, on travail. Je fais un stage, I know stage. Um, oops, stage, do I just hit enter, space? What do I do here? Stage? Nope, enter? Nope, okay. Je fais un stage pour devenir, what did it say? Oh, missed the feminine there, informaticien. De chinois, on, how do you, do you just enter? I guess enter makes it, come on. What happened? Start. Yeah, I knew this was gonna be a disaster. Got it. Ah, we just did this. Okay, alright, hold on, we're, we're gonna get through this. Le stagiaire. Lord. Okay, at least it's mixing this up. Man, we just did all this, can I skip? Ils, uh, no, ils travaillent ensemble à la télé. Ils travaillent ensemble, blah blah blah. Uh, on est collègue chez, Peugeot. Qu'est-ce que, qu'est-ce, qu'est-ce que tu fais dans la vie? Okay, uh, je fais un stage passionnant. Let's see if I get it again, okay, on travail. Boom. Don't hit enter. Je fais un stage pour devenir informaticien. Stage? Pour, I guess I have to hit enter? Uh, but I want. Boom, doing it. It's just like fishing. On est. On est colle- collèg-. That's college. Colle- collèg-. Colleg-. Is this it? Oh, lord. Oh, it's, okay, collèg-. Uh, mixing everything up. Que, ce, que, did I get it? Ooh! Ton travail est passionnant. Oh, whoa, what is this? What is happening? Passionant. Nope, this is wrong. Passin- pass, it's pas- passionnant? Passionant? Ugh! Ah! Passionant. Oh, lord, this is terrible, I hate this so much. Qu'est-ce que, qu'est-ce que vous faites? Nope, nope, fair. No! Dude, why? What is, it's like, it's not meant to be worked on a computer. Okay, well, that was fifteen minutes, probably ten minutes, of just cringey, terrible, I hate it. Every moment of that was awful to me. Um, do you guys like it? Should I do another one? Or should we go listen to some children's stories? I don't think I can handle another one. I think we're gonna listen to some French stories. Um, French Experiment. How many people are, oh, we got five people here. Good morning, everybody. Okay, let's listen to, what do you think? Lois- uh, lois- oiseau? Lois- oiseau? Oiseau? Lois- oiseau? Lois- oiseau elle est baleine. Baleine? Elle est toujours. It's good that you have to do it over, though, yeah, you're right, you're right. I know, it's reps. Gotta get those reps in. Um... Okay, well, it was a little shocking, that was a little shocking to my system. I feel vulnerable in front of all of you, so I'm gonna go to something I know, I'm gonna go to my safe space. Um, but we're gonna listen to, how about this one? The Bird and the Whale. For the next ten minutes, and, uh, and I'll feel good about, uh, maybe we'll do some more Babbel tomorrow. Maybe I'll do some tonight, just to get a little bit more comfortable with it. Okay. Oiseau et la baleine. Um, I don't really know this fable story, whatever this is. Um, so let's, let's listen to a little bit of it. Cool. Okay, cool. Il était une fois, uh, is this? There was a ti- wait, a fois, time, like? There was, uh, of, I don't know what a fois means, here. Uh, un ozo, is that a bird? Oiseau. Un oiseau qui aimait une baleine. Uh, who had a, who, who was friends with a, a whale. Et une baleine, baleine, qui aimait un oiseau. So, and a, and a whale that was friends with, uh, a bird, let's see what hap-. Once upon a time, okay. You know what my go-to here is? It's, uh, the Sweet Crude song, chaque fois, chaque fois, chaque fois. Every time. Chaque une fois, chaque une fois. So, there was a time. Il était, il était, il était une fois. Um... Once upon a time, oh, okay, sorry, once upon a time is what it goes there. Um... Da-da-da, there was a bird who loved a whale, ah, aimait, it's not friends with. So, this is a love story. Um, et une baleine qui aimait un oiseau. Let me, let's get that pronunciation going. Grab the lasan, cool. Un oiseau qui émet une baleine. Un oiseau qui émett- une, émett- une baleine. Et une baleine qui émett- un oiseau. Lasans everywhere. L'oiseau aimait le beau sourire de la baleine. Il aimait la façon gracieuse qu'elle avait de nager dans l'eau. Whoa, okay. La baleine aimait les belles plumes blanches de l'oiseau. Elle aimait le regard des planés dans le ciel. Okay. Man, does it, da-da, ah, okay. Today seems like it's going forever. Oiseau aimait le beau sourire, sou- sour- soir- soirée de la baleine. Baleine, okay. Uh, the bird loved the beautiful something of the whale. Sorry, is that a, oh, smile, right? Is that what that word means? The beautiful smile of the whale. Il aimait la façon gracieuse qu'elle avait de nage- nage dans l'eau. Okay, I think I can piece this together. Uh, he loved, uh, the way, la façon, uh, the gracious way. I'm guessing what gracieux means, but, the gracious way qu'elle avait, um, that she, um, would swim in the water. Let's see how close I got to that, I don't wanna, uh, I don't wanna spoil it. La baleine aimait les belles plumes, la bien- baleine, I don't know how to say this word. Aimait les belles plumes blanches de l'oiseau. Okay, so the whale loved the beautiful feathers, uh, beautiful white feathers of the bird. Elle aimait le regard plan dans le ciel. Uh, she loved to watch plein air, I'm guessing this is a fly. Watch. She loved to watch le- it, or him, no, that's not right. I guess it's, that's what we're trying to say, though. Elle aimait le regard plein air dans le ciel. So the bird loves the beautiful smile and watching graciously swim through the water. And the whale loves the white fle- 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 feathers, feathers of the oiseau. And, uh, loves seeing it swim, uh, oh, loves seeing it fly through the sky. Okay, let's see how I did. The bird loved the whale's beautiful smile. Yay. Uh, he loved the gracious way she swam through the water. The whale loved the bird's handsome white feathers, handsome, hmm, aw. Uh, she loved to watch him soar through the sky, soar, plein air, cool. Let's listen to it one more time. Oh, gosh, sorry, wanna hear it again. That's cool, I'm gonna listen to that again with my eyes closed. Plana- de la ciel, dans le ciel. Okay. Cool, that's fun. Uh, this is a beautiful love story, I can't wait to hear the twist. They can't be together, you just can't. You're too, you're too different. You're from different worlds, it'll never work. Okay, uh, ils aimait tous les deux mangent beaucoup de petits poissons. Ils aimait tous, tous les deux mangent beaucoup de petits poissons, petits poissons. Um, okay, they love, um, tous les deux, what is tous les deux? I wanna say les deux is both, they both love. Is that what we're saying? Ils aimait tous les deux manger, uh, beaucoup de petits poissons. So they both love to eat fish. They both loved to eat lots of tiny fish, oh yeah, de petits poissons. Yeah, gotta get that krill. Is that what it's called, krill? Uh, don't, oh wait, I didn't listen to that, gotta, gotta listen. Ils aimait, ils aimait, gotta get that a little bit better. That's great, so poetic, I love it. Durant l'été, okay, cool, so during summer. Durant l'été, oiseau et la baleine se retrouvant dans la baie. I don't know what a baie is. Ils parlent beaucoup, they talk a lot. Ils parlent dans, parlant, ils, ils parlent uh, de la, de la lune et de la, de meri. Uh, they talk. La, la lune et des marées, uh, et des bateaux sur l'océan. Man, what are we saying here? Is this a moon? Uh, during the summer, the bird and the whale play, met, wait, hold on. Met in the bay, oh, se retrouvant, okay. They talked a lot. Ils parlent beaucoup. They talked about the moon, okay. And the tides, ah, des marées, how do we say that? Not mariage, right? Now, uh, and the ships in the ocean. Et des bateaux, oh, we know bateau, I knew that, what am I doing? Et des bateaux sur l'océan, okay. Let's hear how bad I'm butchering all this. Oh, I went too far. Durant l'été, l'oiseau et la baleine se retrouvaient dans la baie. Ils parlaient beaucoup. Ils parlaient de la lune et des marées et des bateaux sur l'océan. Ah, sorry. L'océan. Uh, durant l'été, oiseau et la baleine se retrouvant dans la baie. Dans la baie. Ils parlent beaucoup, ils parlent de lune. Durant l'été, l'oiseau et la baleine se retrouvaient dans la baie. Ils parlaient beaucoup. Ils parlaient de. I keep saying parlant, it's parler. What's up with, what's up with that? Come on dude, get it together. Ils parlaient beaucoup. Ils parlaient de la lune. De la lune. Et des marées. Des marées. Et, et des bateaux sur l'océan. Des bateaux sur l'océan. Okay, um, cool, well, um, this is turning out to be a beautiful love story, and I don't wanna ruin it with some terrible twist. Oh god, don't look ahead! Okay, we'll pick up on this in a bit. Um, cool, well, you know what, that was my time for today. Um, let's see what we got in the comments, allez toujours, it's good that you have to do it over, drills are good. Um, and that was some tough spelling in there, in that Babbel lesson, says Monica. And I've been trying to learn French for years. Spelling is literally my nightmare, I freaking hate it. Um, but it's okay. We're gonna do it, we have to, right? It's just something we have to do, so we're gonna do it. Okay, thanks for watching, um, this has been Skylar Learns French, don't have my piano. We're gonna get on Twitch soon, and, um, if you like what we're doing, we're gonna get our own channel and all that stuff, so let me know, and, um, uh, let me, yeah, let me know what you think about this. Do you want me to do more Babbel stuff? Is that like, was that fun to watch? Do you want me to do more of the story things? Like the, um, you know? I, I don't know what, I don't know what you guys enjoy. Um, and I would love to do things that are useful for you. If it's fun to just watch me mess around, that's cool too, I can do that. Uh, bon jour déjà, says Squire, dis Squire. Uh, I will, je vais. Uh, and, uh, yeah, we're gonna do, we're gonna do more. So we're gonna finish out the month, we're gonna do thirty days, and, uh, then we've got a whole, um, whole, uh, new kind of programming set up with some teachers. Um, so yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out some things, but it's all gonna be here, it's all gonna be public. You get to see me learn French in public, and it's. You get to see me learn French in public and it's really embarrassing and cool. Okay, Monica said she liked the story better. Um, cool, noted. Um, I did too, but you know, maybe, uh, you gotta get outside of your comfort zone, so maybe we'll just kinda keep mixing things in. Alright. Uh, à bientôt. Merci, au revoir, uh, merci de regarder. Skylar learns French. See you guys tomorrow, bye.